This is our special city council meeting. It's Wednesday, January 31st. And with that, we'll call the meeting to order and Renee, if you'll take the role, please.
Sure. Mayor Ikors.
Here.
Paul Pendergrass. Counselor Phillips.
Here.
Counselor Richards.
Here.
And with us, we have Deputy City Clerk Renee and Mike Flaherty, our city attorneys also on the line and a guest. So with that, agenda for this portion of the meeting is labor negotiation strategy under Minnesota statute, section 13D point 03 subdivision one clause B. This portion of the meeting will be closed pursuant to such statutes upon duly approved motion of the city council. I will now entertain a motion to close the portion of the meeting.
We take your motion to close?
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second to close the open meeting. So we go into a closed portion of the meeting now. So at all of favors say aye.
Aye.
The time is at 3:16. The city council will now go into closed session in chambers. Only the city council and authorized city representatives will be in attendance at any portion of the closed session. With that, any members of the, anybody on Zoom will be, will call and let you know when we're back in open session. And.
Renee?
Yeah, he's good.
So we're back in open session now and see, Mike, do I make a brief announcement coming out of closed?
What you want to do is when you come into open session, then you're going to say you directed me to make an offer to candidate A.
So with that, we're in open session and we'll have Mike humble proceed with offering it to candidate A. And we'll wait for response with your negotiations.
Sounds good.
Next item is our WSB contract. P and Z to look at our codes. Jim or Jim, if you want to make a brief comment or motion?
We read everything that there is in open session for P and Z, a special meeting last Friday. Made a few just really small changes that there were, and that's why I make a motion to approve the WSB contract.
I'll second.
As it is.
Any other comments? I'm sure they're anxious to keep going and I hope. So do you know what the next step is with this group coming down here?
Yeah, she was down actually last night.
Okay.
Okay. And got a chance to meet with everybody, which I thought was important since we were at that, at that point that's going on. So yeah, she's ready to start right away.
Other comments, all those favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Through. Find the contracts tomorrow then.
Yeah.
Next item is a CMS, construction management services of Rochester agreement for building services going forward. So.
I make a motion that we table this contract. There's a couple of things that I will not agree with. So I'd like to make that for the next session that we can talk about that over.
To bring back at our February 8th meeting?
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
We'll table that CMS to our February 8th meeting, special city council meeting. Favorits, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good. Next item is a, there should be a gentleman joining us here.
Can I get, you can keep your notes out of the books, but I gotta take those books back with me to shred.
Oh, before we pick my notes out, I made notes on everything that was in it. I mean, I highlighted stuff. I mean, I went, I mean, I went through everything. Okay.
While we hang on until it's accepted?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, yeah, and then I'll, and then I'll pick them up.
Okay, yeah.
Just because, you know, all the other informations, you know, got their stuff for the other candidates.
Got it. Okay.
Do you have those new sheets?
Hang out here.
I think we're good.
No, girl.
I think we're good. I appreciate that.
Are you gonna let us know?
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, as soon as I know. I appreciate the opportunity to work with you guys.
Thank you very much.
It's been a great experience. Enjoyed it.
Sorry for those late meetings.
Yeah, problem. But if you can keep the weather like this, it's even better. A lot of traveling to do yet this winter. So appreciate it.
That's it.
So continuously breaking news here. So do you have a copy of the sheet?
I do. I have a couple copies of stuff for you guys.
Why don't you move on up here a little bit?
We could pull the podium up if you want to.
So I have a packet for everybody. And this is going, this is going to show you what the image 360 will do for us for the wrap and the cost on that. And the estimated high, which was okay. And then the second sheet, so the first three sheets are image 360. So I'm going to talk about the wrap. What the truck looks like is on the left. What it's going to look like is on the right. Same font, same color scheme as we have, same lettering. Based off of the other, other apparatus that they have wrapped for us, we thought maybe 10,000, but because this doesn't have so many angles. It's like a sheet they're putting on. It's just a big boss. So that, so that I think really helped our, our cost there. Sure. The second, the fourth sheet from fire safety USA, that is the in-service work that we talked about, that 30-ish thousand dollars that, you know, we, we needed to add for fluids, inverter, mount for our iPad, you know, things like that. The biggest thing there was, was the pump heater, which was $8,500, which is not shown in the bottom. It's shown in the top in the work. They just have it as a kit now that's just labor plus parts for $8,500.
Okay, so just, so the image is from image 360. That's the one you're going with, right?
Yes.
4215 instead of 10,000?
Yep, yep. So that's, it's quite a bit better than we thought it was going to be.
You see some stuff here, an oil leak on the input shaft on the pump transmission?
Yep, yep.
Okay, so that's all a part of that thing then. Okay, there's also rear pump packing drip leak. Engine oil leak. We don't want to have oil over there.
We're adding a toolbox, a chest toolbox with pullout drawers like we have on engine one, as we're going to try to mirror these. Dan would like us to mirror these as much as we can. So that, that'll be right around $2,500, maybe less based on the depth of what that container is. Because Warren Township was not, or is a full-time department, they don't really have plugins to plug in radios and to plug in flashlights and everything. They carry them all on their person. And/or they're plugged in at the, at the station. So you see a lot of duplex outlets and outlet this and adapters and things like that that we have to add. Another big one on the bottom is the master intake valve, which is on the officer's side. So passenger side. Our pump is now, and it doesn't show you on this, but our pump, everything is on this truck is interior inside. So there's a pull-down door around everything. So the salt, the grime, the whatever the stuff is that they spray on the roads is not going to get at our pump panel.
Oh, nice.
So because of that, we have to have our adapter that fits to our suction units or our hose, some hose, some suction. But it has to be small. So that's why that cost is high, that $3,100 on the bottom there. Because it has to fit within that roll-up door.
So it says estimate at the top, but it says to.
It's gonna be pretty close. It's gonna be pretty close.
So I make sure we got.
You know, maybe, I mean, I'd give them just a little bit of leeway if you would, but they had three people working on this and I, and I trust the three people that is their master mechanic plus their master electrician. So.
So.
And the last sheet, sorry, the last sheet, this is something that Ryland and Renee and Shirley had seen when we talked about how this
Yeah.
Just our, our outfitting purchase list. We're going to try to pull as much as we can from engine two, existing engine tube, right? Like you see a couple Xs on there that we know for sure we're going to pull. So that can, that can help drive that price down to 50,000 or less, right? That's our budget for that.
What are Pelican lights?
Pelican light is a portable light, about this big, and it just telescopes. So it's got like a big, it looks like a sunflower when it's all set up. But they're expensive and that, and we have some on engine two, so we're going to pull them off of there.
Thermal imaging camera?
We'd like to have that on this rig too, if, if we can stay below our 50,000. Love to have it on there.
Which one is that? I'm sorry.
That's thermal imaging camera for $8,799. It's about halfway down the page.
Yep. These are also just fire safety quotes. So I do have, we have another outfit or two that we work with.
Can you check that out and, and just get, get some, you know, it'd be great if you had three, but at least you get two beds. So let me make sure that we're.
Sure.
I'll just throw the question out because it is the most expensive thing on the list. Is that something we need right now or can that, is there grants available for any of this type of work or?
There, there is, and we have been writing grants. We've, we've written five or six, seven. So a couple of the big ones that we wrote for were the Gary Sinise Foundation. And that's still out there. We wrote that for $50,000 for just gear, general gear. We put into firehouse subs for more gear for $50,000. There's a couple of other ones, smaller ones that we put out there. So the SCBA grant that you guys are aware of that the entire county is going for needs to be under $2 million. So it's an AFG grant. And our portion of that is very small. But in it initially, everybody said that we could put in SCBAs, so packs, bottles, masks, and compressors and ticks, thermal imaging cameras. And now they have to part down because everybody wanted in. So now we're over the 2 million limit. So we were going to have a thermal imaging camera coming in that, but we're not. That is, that is something we can, we can hold on and try to find something else.
So so this cut back of 2,000 million plus, has everybody been given a, got your request by 50% or 30% or are the people taking more out so you don't have to worry about for like a small people?
Right. So what they did initially was they just told everybody to, there, there's a formula that FEMA gives you based on the number of trucks you have. So like number of seats you have, meaning number of SCBAs you can have. So ours was 19. We have 19 seats, like an engine is four seats. A brush rig is two, you know, so we did the calculation. So we, we will get 19 packs and 38 bottles. Out of that, we will not, and that's what everybody is going to do. There, there's a formulaic sheet that every department gets. So Rochester is going to get, you know, some enormous amount because they have so many firefighters and so many rigs. Other ones that'll be like us would be like Yoda, Byron, Afield. So we will for sure get the, the packs and the, and the bottles that we want. We're hoping that by reducing that down to that for every department, we will be able to put masks in there. But we're pretty sure we're not going to be able to get the other stuff wedged in, unfortunately. Again, on that sheet though, we did say, like, do you need a compressor or the cascade system? And ours was checked, yes, we do need one. So if there is money left over, Chris Ferguson from Rochester Fire said that they would, you know, that we would all discuss and try to.
Are you right now using that compressor or are you going outside to put, put actually in there?
Nope. So it's just, we are using the compressor. Our, our compressor is kind of on its last, not on its last legs, but it's close. It's 15 years old. We put like $2,500 into it this last year.
Is the air still good for everybody that's breathing that? Cause being a scuba diver, I mean, you don't mess with air. I mean, you get everybody sick. So.
It's calibrated every, every three months. And it, you know, we check it for carbon monoxide. We check, you know, there's a whole bunch of different checks, moisture as well. So it's, it's performing okay. The reason that we wanted to put one in there is because it is getting older. And we're starting to, we're starting to put money into it. So beyond regular maintenance.
Right.
The same size, new ones, replacements, or do we need to?
It's actually the same size. It's the same pressure as well.
So I know you had to move it because of the new truck. Get the location for it then?
We, yes, we do.
All right. So if you look at the spreadsheet. Well, the number with the 300,000 plus 3,415 outfitting from the fire safety and the wrapping is 4216. It comes in at 334, 631. And that's without our 51,000 outfitting. So.
What's it come at 334, 651?
334, 631,000.
31? Okay, and 51.
334, 631. So if we were to use the 79,000, the public safety aid, that would lower to 255 or 65. That's, that's one option. So right now we've been talking about option number two in most of our discussions. The full 350,000, 10 years at annual payments of 50,458. And what I Christian was going to be online here, but he's not. So we'll go ahead and. So right now, when we were talking about the full 350,000, you take the public safety. So if you look at option one, that was 270,834. So if you use this, all of the safety aid of 79,166, that lease payment would be 39,580 and 44 cents for 10 years. At 6% interest, I'm sorry. I said 10%, I got my 10.
Is it 10 years?
10 years.
I'm sorry?
No, you, you, he just said it 10 years. Then I said, yeah, yes.
10 years, Lee?
10 years, yeah.
And 10%?
6%.
6%.
Take 100 and the other one.
10 years, 39,580. So if we, if you look at that, 250,000, it'd be something less than that, but I don't know what. And then outfitting with 50,000 or 51 from our CIP. And I, no, I just continue to talk about the concern of coming out with our wastewater. Option two was, is now it's 350, but it's.
It's still be back to 39,580.
Now, now that we got good figures, because instead of 350, it's 3
334.
631.
335, 334?
334, 34, 631.
334. 631.
Wait.
What is that?
Cause I'm, I'm taking 300,000 plus 31,000, right? So it'd be 331 or 15. And then we add in 4200. So it'd be 335 because we're, we're putting the, we're putting the image 360 wrapping. Remember? So instead of the 10,000, it would go down to 4215. So that's 300,000.
So this could be 4215.
Yep, yep.
And which?
It rounded up on my sheet here.
Yeah.
So what was the number you came out with? Three?
So that would come out to.
Oh, our final?
Yeah. So 335 something.
Yeah. So three's number eight. Oh, about 3 million. Oh, I need. Box 31.
415.
15.
The wrapping was what did you say?
So 335, 630, 56.
You know, the wrapping, did you get the difference on the price of the wrapping?
Yep.
Good. Are you having trouble getting back in or? Oh, we thought you were earlier. So I'll send, you want to try again?
That'd be our finance.
Go to our community.
Use something.
The worst case would be is to do a copy.
I'm not that.
Put that into your browser.
Too, right. You sure can. The whole thing sure can.
It has to.
Okay. Makes sense.
Yeah. And we don't have anything indicating here that you're waiting to be admitted. That's why we're saying 300. So let me know when you should pop up your, our screen.
I bet you it's gone. It's not there anymore, Ryan. It's not there anymore because it's past the timeframe that I went on. So if you have an email, I can send him the link.
Yeah, why don't, Christian? So what's happened was we, we timed out on our Zoom.
Oh, there it is.
Oh, maybe. You're okay. Okay, you're admitted. In process.
Right there.
There you go. Okay. All right. We're just starting the discussion here too. And so we got some, we got some new estimates.
Unmute.
And we can what we might do is I will go into and also become a host so you can share my laptop. And then you can see the figures. Everybody can see the figures all together then. All right, I'll hang up now.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
465.
What's that?
Oh, yeah.
465.
You have to send me a new Zoom because it's off the calendar.
I have 256, 64, 56. Oh, I see what you're, you're running out. Okay. Yeah. Cause that's, that's taking the 79.
A packet?
The calendar's off.
I know. Your packet I emailed you. It's on the top of that.
Semantics.
Why can't I click on it for a copy of? We'll be back shortly, Christian. I'm trying to get my computer to the to the Zoom invite.
He's off. What about the?
No worries.
6% and come up with it. Hopefully lower than, yeah, we don't pay until 2025, our first one.
Right.
Oh, okay.
So that's back to, yeah, January 1st, 2025.
Just to give you a heads up, Christian, we, we did get some, we have a, our training officer from the fire department here, Johann Sonnberg. And so he's giving us some new, better numbers. So 30, 350,000, we're looking at a number of 334,630.
And. Okay.
So he's going to share the options. Talking about the options and we'll show that on the calendar in a few minutes. But if we use over a public safety aid of 79,156, that would drop down our number to 255,465.
256.
256?
Yeah, I got 256, 465.
Yeah.
Yeah, two fifty-six too, Jim.
What's that?
Fifty-six, four sixty-five, yeah, two fifty-six.
Yeah, and then so.
Four sixty-five.
If, if we pay interest for ten years.
Why don't I have, I got three thirty-four, six thirty, right? Then seventy-nine, one sixty-six. Because my formula says it's two fifty-five.
So you start there, that's for the outfitting.
Mm-hmm.
This is the wrap. And then that's where we end up.
I sent you in the Zoom.
Geez, my formula didn't say three, so you go to three thirty-five.
Yep, six thirty. The seventy-nine and sixty-six, we're going to talk about.
Okay, all right. Okay, now, let me get to the invitation.
So who's that?
Uh, Christian is with NCL Government Capital.
Oh, okay, so one question I would have, if we pay it early, or we have the option to pay it off early, correct?
You do, correct.
So we don't realize the interest, because right now, if we go ten years, we pay fifteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and some change in interest over a ten-year period. Which.
Recording in progress.
Or no, I'm sorry, that's, that's per month, right? Per, because, or per year, per year, I'm sorry, per year, and that times ten is a hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight seventy-eight, and some change.
So the, the idea behind it is to get it paid off quicker, okay? But to be able to at least hit there if we run into an issue in balancing the budget, we at least have that, that bottom line, it's there. But try to get more, you know what I'm trying to say, try to pay more. We got something up there, Ryan.
The five hundred dollar fee paid to lesser at closing as well on there.
Why didn't Christian come up on here?
We're missing that, I don't know, we can't see where it's underneath there. Be gone. Oh, there it is, okay. Documentation fee.
Thirty-five, ten years, six percent.
Mm-hmm.
Annually, right?
Yep.
Payback every year. Yes. Close to what you.
All right, can you see the screen, Christian?
Yep, I can.
So, um, this is the new figure, three thirty-five, six thirty. That we're looking at for a total expenditure, plus another fifty-one thousand from a, for city paying for the outfitting of that.
I'm gonna get that on, you can put it at fifty, I'm gonna get.
Make it what, fifty?
Fifty is good, I'll, I will get that under fifty. Again, Dan and I have not gone all the way through Engine Two to know exactly what we can pull off, I just pulled some of the big ones out. Um, but we're gonna reuse some hose and, and things like that, which is expensive. Um, and we can pull off that. I, I would say just to caution us that because those are estimates, I would, I would give us just a little bit of wiggle, of wiggle room on that, just in case we get back, get this thing back here and in a few weeks or whatever, and there's something else we, we missed in the four hours that we.
Right, and that's, you know, we'd be able to increase, you know, the, the lease amount. Um, so I think Ryland and I had discussed last week of, um, having the total loan about be three fifty, just so you guys aren't covered in case, you know, the estimates come back and they are higher. Um, now, if it does stay at that number, um, you could use the leftover, you could apply it towards a payment or, um, you know, we can figure it out from there, so it is an option if you guys want to go that route.
I'll give you a little bit of a fudge factor off of that, you want to be able to.
Give us a little wiggle room.
Yeah, that doesn't mean to use it if you.
Oh, no, no. The, the relief is paying for, um, you know, they said they would, we would put, we voted and approved putting in fifty thousand dollars towards outfitting the truck. So there is, we tried out some Genesis tools, they're the battery-operated extrication tools, they came out to forty-six thousand and change. Um, so the relief is taking care of that. And then, so there's a little bit of money left over, so the really, relief will probably, Will, Ryan and I talked about this, and we thought the relief would pay for the transport of the apparatus back here.
Okay.
We don't know yet.
Oh, you don't, okay.
But you're gonna pay for that, so we don't have to worry about that.
You don't have to worry about it.
You have a driver?
Working on it.
Here's your chain.
I already told them, my sister said she'd be up.
I'm just putting it in there, playing.
I asked her last night.
So that's what we need to get it across state lines, so.
Check with Colby, I think she does, actually, really?
Yeah.
Check with her.
Okay.
If she kept it out.
I will, um, so yeah, so we just, and we just have to, all have to work with Renee to double-check that before that apparatus gets on the road on its way back here that we, it's covered under our insurance, so.
And that'll be, that'll be part of our, our document, um, package as well, so that insurance portion.
Okay.
Oh, it just, I think from a council's perspective, you know, we look at this using the, um, public safety aid for driving down the, uh, NCL lease payment. You know, between fifty thousand and thirty-nine thousand is, ten, eleven thousand dollars over a ten-year period, that's a hundred thousand dollars left in insurance if we were to use the CIP to pay down that lease.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely, and let me, I'm gonna run a quick, the numbers back really quick one time and just see what I would do if you were to do the, the full three hundred and fifty and use that fund to just to make your first payment upfront. If you can give me one second here.
Still have your. I do. I put it at three, I put three fifty, but if you want to put it.
And I'm listening, so this is the payment.
At three fifty.
What's that number you guys came up with?
What's that?
What'd you come up with?
For payment?
At three fifty.
At three fifty, the payment is forty-seven, five fifty-three, seventy-nine, eight, every year.
And six thousand more a year. Six thousand more a year. For sixty thousand over the ten years.
Right.
Yeah.
Christian, is there, is there a penalty on the payoff?
Um, I don't believe so, don't believe so at, at ten years, but I will double-check on that just to.
Sorry, I meant, I meant if we, if we, um, pay it off early, so let's say we pay it off in five years. Oh, you said no?
Right, yeah, typically no, yeah.
Take that down, was that eighty thousand, right?
Christian, when you. Oh, oh, so that was, that was even before we took that off, okay.
Yeah, so that is our loan amount. I mean, that's a little more.
It's around the thirty-nine, or what'd you put under?
We put. The loan amount of two seventy.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, so we backed this, this.
Yeah, I think the thirty-nine, which is basically forty thousand, is just more palatable than doing the other, going that direction, you know, so. Whatever was my choice.
So, what, I think I heard you just talk about the budget, so this payment would come out of our general fund. It would be a budgeted item.
Good.
Is what, is what I was explaining to me from, um, Mike Labonte, our natural planner, so.
We can do that next year, but at least we.
Reserves, yeah.
Yeah, but we would do that next year, not this year, so that would be working for that.
Seventy-nine would come out of it.
That's right.
I mean, seventy-nine is gonna be done because we've already got that check. Okay, so we wouldn't be pulling that, so we all need.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's coming out already.
Yeah, because we've already got that on the reserve side already.
Yeah, it's in reserves right now, so it wasn't counted as revenue in our budget.
Right.
So it's sitting out there in reserves today, that would still be there a year from now. So. That would help our CIP, you know, um, is one app, aspect. Like an option three. Option three is using the ninety-six thou- or seventy-nine towards fifty-one or fifty thousand, I should say. The balance could use for twenty twenty. We'd use, um, whatever the difference is, it's.
With twenty twenty-five.
Twenty-nine, thirty thousand towards the payment in twenty twenty-five, so we'd just be pulling on another twenty thousand or. Yes.
But that's, that's, that's doing the full three fifty though, right? But that three fifty's gonna cost us sixty thousand over ten years.
But once we, we firm up, we, if, if we, if I can understand it right, we, if we start out with a three fifty, but we actually end up with invoices showing three thirty-five, then that's what our payments would be then. Would be based on that for ten years, so something less than fifty thousand. Forty-nine or whatever, forty-eight.
It's a thirty-nine. That was still ten thousand extra a year, right?
Still what?
I mean, ten thousand extra a year. And if we went that way, instead of just going with the, the rate that you have right now, on financing the two seventy.
Yes, okay. Or we can use the seventy-nine, seventy-nine thousand, take it off of the, and get a lower, lower lease payment, save the hundred thousand, and we use CIP funding or towards outfitting, or something less than fifty thousand.
Yeah, you know, saving ten thousand a year is ten thousand a year, you know, I mean, especially with the way, you know, we went that last December meeting.
Right.
Ten grand is ten grand.
Yeah.
But, but, yeah.
Um, because we straightened to find ten grand.
Oh, shit.
As right now, our CIP, the way we adopted it, our hundred and fifty thousand, fifty thousand is always meant to be for the fourth, uh, for the pickup for the public works.
Hmm.
Water treatment, and if we take another fifty thousand out of that hundred thousand, that's leaving fifty thousand for our insurance on our wastewater treatment plan.
And, and, how, how confident are you on the numbers for what you put out for, uh, the rates and that on the, on the treatment plan?
Well, uh, that's a good question, you know, when we hook, if we hook the three, there's five hundred users, and we pick up four in local estates right away, and we pick up the three developments, four, yeah, three developments, we don't pick up River Bend yet. So we're picking up, no, um, two hundred and twenty, probably three hundred and fifty to four in residence, so we might be okay.
That's what I was wondering, I mean, do you give it a, a ninety percent and eighty percent?
Well, I'd say we're, I wanna say we're seventy-five percent confident, it's just. If all else fails, I guess we could still go into reserves, I hope we don't have to do that.
No, no, I was just, you know, wondering where, where that number was, because if you're, you're, that makes me feel a little bit better that we're okay on the CIP.
Yeah.
You know, at that, if we're at a seventy-five percent success, that is gonna cover it.
You know, the ten thousand between three thirty-five and two fifty-five is, that's a hundred thousand dollars less money we're paying interest on.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm looking at, yeah. So that's sixty thousand dollars, okay, yeah, at the end for ten years, so.
You know, if this, if you, this is Johann and Dan, if they can, anything you can do here, so fifty thousand would help us on our CIP, the thermal imaging would be, help us, that's, it's, it's.
So if we could put that thermal imager off for a year.
Right, right.
You know, and, and that, because you've gotten by without it, right? You know, so I mean, that would just help.
That would help, so. Two, remember that we had talked about, so down here on, on the lower portion of, of Ryland's spreadsheet, the first responders, new vehicle, that, that new F-two-fifty, plus the truck bed and all that stuff. So we would, we would bring that out of the equipment fund and the ten percent. So, but there, there should be, so that's a hundred and five thousand, there should be some left over in that account, um, that we could also push towards outfitting the truck.
Yeah.
So that would even reduce, you know, again, what we would.
There could be ten, you know, we paid.
We paid forty-nine and change for the caffeine.
Right, for forty-nine.
Yep.
Is that the right number for outfitting? Hundred and five is still that bottom number.
That's the exact number.
So that's, I made the assumption it was a hundred.
I said, oh, that's exact.
Well, at least we got that firm now, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Between the, our equipment fund balance and your efforts to reduce the fifty, we're, we're probably okay with the CIP, it's, there's risk there, but I think it's not a big risk.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as you get that seventy-five, Ryland, that makes me feel a lot better at the seventy-five percent, you know.
Are you pretty confident you can do until that down?
I can.
Okay.
I mean, we'll just take a look at, at thermal imaging, and if we put that off for a year.
That drives it down to.
Yeah.
You know, forty-two thousand.
And who knows, maybe a grand will come through.
That would be nice, too. Okay.
Is that my, sorry, excuse me, is that F-two-fifty, is that gonna be a, a new truck?
To use truck?
No, it's a brand new, it's new.
That, that Ford F-two-fifty that you see on the bottom there, Christian?
That's all brand new.
That's brand new, that's for the first responder department.
Okay.
Paid cash for that.
Okay, you already paid for that?
Uh, just as an FYI, and Christian, you can comment as well, um, Christian's responsibility in the NCL organization is, is, uh, primarily fire safety equipment. Uh, lease operations, turnout gear, there's other opportunities for other financing, you know, but it's all something to keep in mind going forward that we can, he's aware of that, so that's pretty much what, it's in his bucket to take care of things like that, so.
Okay, absolutely, and I'll add on to that, it's, it's all a public safety, so police, EMS, um, so anything in the public safety department falls under my, my vertical, so.
So, um, this two hundred and fifty-six thousand or two hundred and. This two hundred and fifty-six thousand or two hundred and fifty-seven thousand. With that, from your. Expertise, uh, on the phone here, do you think that's still be a, um, a ten-year, six percent? Category, or would that change, or what's your, what's your thoughts?
Yeah, it would be pretty similar to, um. What is on that, the, the proposal for two seventy, so with, with that rate.
So is the council pretty, feeling good about using the seventy-nine thousand?
Yeah, 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 definitely, okay.
Okay. So if this, if you, um, wouldn't mind doing one more proposal for us? Of that two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, or if you want that to exact number.
Let's just do, let's just do that, yeah, two hundred and fifty-seven.
Okay.
Of, uh, sending us a, a third proposal, that would be appreciated.
Yep, absolutely. So I can get that to you.
We've, you know, I guess we kind of wrap this up, I think we can, I make a motion, we approve. Using a, uh. A, a lease agreement from NCL for two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars towards the payment. Of the truck and, uh, fire safety outfit and the, um. Striping, wrapping.
Are you second?
And using our public safety aid fund towards that, of seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. So we've been looking at a lease arrangement payment for two hundred and fifty-seven thousand. The city would outfit, um, up to fifty thousand dollars. Hopefully less, of course, in all goods, and. Our first payment would be in, uh, January of twenty twenty-five. And that payment to be part of the proposal from NCL.
Did you do a second, Jim?
Okay, I think that's, um. That extra ten thousand dollars a year is gonna help us maybe in future payments, too.
She left, let her CDL in.
Hopefully not next year, but, um, in the near future. Any other questions?
No motion.
So you, you did the motion, Jim seconded, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so. That discussion's already done, and so, next is about.
So with that, um, Christian, thank you for joining us. Uh, we look forward to working with you at NCL, and we'll look forward to that proposal.
Likewise, likewise, gentlemen, thank you very much for allowing me to join, um, I will get that over to you here right away, so should see it come through in the next couple minutes.
One more question, or if he hasn't voted, but one more question that I have, um.
Are you, are you okay, Christian, with everything?
Yep, yep, so, um.
You have that for Christian or?
I do want, oh, I'm sorry, okay, go ahead. Um, so, I, I've been in contact with Jay Pennergrass from, um, the fire department that we're purchasing. The fire truck from, so he's, he's asking when we're going to give him a check and when we're going to pick it up, so it's not his shed anymore.
So.
Uh.
You want a credit application, which I don't know, you've had a chance to start working on that.
Uh, not really.
So, right now, the credit application is, you go back, and Christian, what's your time period for when you receive the credit application?
Um, hopefully can get approval within a day or two. Um, and then from there, we'll get our document package put together and sent over to you guys. Um, and then as long for, however long it takes you guys to sign and return that to us, we can, once we get it back. We can have it funded, um, within one or two days, typically.
So if we're, just to throw numbers out, if we had something to you by middle, to end of next week?
Yeah, yeah. It's doable, that's gonna be. Quick, if we can get, if we can get the credit app and the signed proposal tonight, so I can get everything submitted tomorrow. Um, can hopefully have approval tomorrow, and then we can start working on the documents. So would that be, would that be possible for you guys, with those items?
Renee?
Everything else.
Not tonight for Renee.
Do you still have payroll to do this week?
I got that done, but I have water billing to do and bill pays due yet, so.
Could Shirley?
Shirley have access to enough information to fill out the credit application. Or is she here tomorrow, or she may be?
Yeah, she's still in the morning.
Is she okay? So we're probably looking at a Monday.
Maybe.
So realistic.
With one, one active, uh, we have a ten, interim city administrator, but end of the month is our water billing and. That needs to go out, today's the thirty-first, and it goes out yet this week, so.
I mean, it started.
Yeah, you, you tell us, Renee, what's possible.
I never know, 'cause it depends on what comes in today, I was working on something and got thrown my off onto something else, so. I, I can't tell you what's gonna happen from day to day.
Well, we'll get, the credit application we'll get to as soon as we can, um. Hopefully next week, of course, it'd be nice, and, uh.
If, if I tell.
What's that? I'm sorry.
Okay, but we can, we can scan it without having to work up my old, right?
Excuse me. So I'm just, I'm just looking at, I'm looking at the ca, calendar, if we, if we get the pack, our, our information to Christian on the fifth, Monday. He said he can turn that around in a couple days, or a day, and then we get it back, we have to sign it. Right, and we get it back to him, and then Christian, how many days after that does it take you to put the packet together?
Um, a day, day.
Okay.
So if we get, if we get everything, you know, if we were to get everything, you know, in the morning, you know, by Monday morning, um. Could hopefully have documents even out to you guys on Monday, potentially, be Monday or Tuesday.
Okay. Um. One more, one more weird question, is it, is it digital, or is, is it, can it all be done with email, or do you need wet signatures?
Um, we do need a hard copy, so with the package, if you got, we'll need you guys to print it off. Um, sign it, and then scan us a copy and then mail us overnight the originals to us as well.
Okay, um, so if I say that, if I say the tenth of February, which is that Saturday, we can tell. Our, our, the people that we're buying it from, um. West Bend, that's what it is, West Bend, I think, um, or Warren Township, sorry, Warren Township. If I tell them the tenth, we, they would have, they would have the funds available, they'd have the funds available by then. Or do I need to move it back to a weekend, like the seventeenth, or something like that?
I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay, I just wanna, I mean, if I say the seventeenth to them, that might be more doable?
If we do it early, or, but everybody's gonna work in there with that, so will they be okay with the seventeenth?
I think they will, they, they, he just really wants the date.
Let's get some extra time in there, so that Renee's not totally swamped with everything that's going on, and, and we give it up, so we need to do it, so. Let's do the seventeenth.
Okay.
You agree with that, Ron?
That sounds good.
Good, great.
More doable than next week. Okay.
So we'll be picking, I'll be telling them to, probably, whoever we have pick up the truck, that's the day that they'll pick up the truck.
And we'll know more, we'll know more next, a week from today than confirm the seventeenth, day two then.
At least you can give them a date, I think, or two.
Great, all in favor of motion signature, probably saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, that's approved, thank you, Christian, very much.
Thank you, gentlemen, I really appreciate it, so.
Christian.
I make a motion.
Sure.
Second.
Whoever say aye.
Right, have a good night, everyone.
Holy thanks. I do something that day.
Yeah.
Yeah.